I'd like to open the council meeting. This is a regular Moose Lake City Council meeting for Wednesday, July 12, 2023. And I'd like to start with a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome our guests here today. And the first, or the next item is approval of the agenda. We do have an addition, and that is on the second page, under six. This will be K, and this will be part of the closed session. This is lab purchase agreement discussion. And also to note, H, I, J, and K are all in the closed session, just for your knowledge. And also one other item in the front on four D, because of some security reasons, that also will be in the closed session. For the technology part?
Yes, part of that server deal. There's some data that we have to discuss openly, and because of security reasons, we can't do it publicly.
Is there any other additions or changes to the agenda? Hearing none, we have a motion to accept the agenda. Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. And also, as you can see, Greg Sarble was not here today. So moving on to the consent agenda, under two A, the minutes. Number one is a regular city council meeting for June 14, 2023. And number two, the special city council meeting for June 27, 2023. Do you have any discussion or questions on the minutes? Motion approved. Do we have a second?
One second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Under two B, financial reports. Number one, the city council payable for June 2023. Number two, the city financial statements for June 2023. And number three, the liquor store profit loss statement for June 2023. Any questions and/or discussion? Motion approved. Do we have a second?
One second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number three is public comment. This time is reserved for comments from the public on matters not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments to three minutes. And I know there may be more than one here that wants to speak during the discussion on farm animals. So at that time, when we open it up, we will have that open for 15 minutes. And, or close before there, if there are no other statements, it will be on that. But I will move on after 15 minutes. Just for everyone's information. So hearing?
I can make a couple of statements unrelated to that, if that's okay.
Okay, yes. Know that it's a three-minute time limit.
No problem. So my name's Terry Corn. I'm just a resident, I've been here three years. I just wanted to acknowledge Harlan and Kate from Moose Lake Power. They've been fantastic and worked with me. There was a truck that came through last year, it was a power pole, and it's left some pretty big divots that have been hard to mow around. They came out, I believe, last week or the week before, and did some amazing work. They really just, they got everything filled in, they flattened it all out. It actually looks better than it did prior to the truck coming in. And it's, it'll be much easier to mow once the grass comes back. I do want to say I really appreciate the side recycling center and the people down there. It's been fantastic for us to just have a local place where we can deposit that and not worry about it. Also, one of the staff down there has been fantastic in collecting many gardens for my wife and I, so we really appreciate that as well. That way it also keeps it out of the recycling and out of landfill long term. I do want to thank Public Works, the compost center. My wife and I have taken really positive advantage of this year. We did install some new gardens at our house to grow some more vegetables, and wanted to refresh gardens. And rather than having to go to the store and spend hundreds and hundreds of dollars on new dirt, we were able to collect that from the recycling center and actually implement that in our gardens, which have been, now both expanded and actually more successful this year as a result. I also wanted to acknowledge Taylor Hansberry. I hope I'm saying her last name right. I've been communicating with her over the past couple of weeks about where Moose Lake City seems to be a very valuable asset to the city. Has been openly communicating with me and helping me navigate the process of city council meetings, as I've never attended one before.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we will pass that on. You've seen there are no other persons for the public comment. We will move on to departmental reports. Four A, the police chief, for June 2023.
Mayor, members of the council, administrator Owens. In your packet, you'll see the police report for June, which included 132 extra patrol, 111 traffic stops, 91 community engagements, 19 assist other agencies, 72 calls for service, and four medicals. So you can tell some are here, I mean, 429 calls for service. Again, some of that's self-generated stuff, which, when you look back on your pie chart that I sent out to you, we're still seeing, we're trending in the right direction with the calls for service decreasing each month. So I'd rather see those other areas of proactive patrol and community engagements fill up most of our time, and it's kind of going that way. So Sarah just completed today. She had her go through a class for records retention, redacting, and stuff like that specific to Minnesota, so she completed that training today. Last night I attended an ATV meeting after that event on September 11th that's coming up. It's going to be a pretty big event, again, with all the schools from Willow, Moose Lake, and Barnum. We're the first one in the nation that they're doing. And they're really trying to kick it off big here. I will be one of the presenters at that in September, but it's going to take a lot of volunteers, and it's going to be a big program with professional riders from all kinds of different sports coming in to promote safety and stuff for kids on ATVs, boats, snowmobiles, and all that. So that'll be coming up in September, so it's going to come pretty quick, but we'll be playing a big part in that as well.
Terrance, where will that be held at?
The Barnum Fairgrounds.
Okay.
Right now, they're wanting everybody from first grade up to seniors, Moose Lake's committed to fifth and sixth grade. We still want to figure out why they're not having everybody, because, you know, a lot of people say, well, we don't have a, you know, ATV or whatever, but they're going to go to a friend's house and ride one, you know, and something like that. So there's been way too many young kids. We've got a lot around here even getting injured or killed, so they're really making a big push for that. They're going to be giving away helmets and all kinds of merchandise, and probably some pro-rider demos and everything, so it'll be, yeah, Barnum Fairgrounds, September 11. So, yeah.
Can other people send out or suggestions?
No, they can. I mean, because some of the parents have, you know, asked as well, and I think they're going to open that up, and anybody who's, the more knowledgeable, a lot of times it takes these younger kids to come home to all of us and tell us what's going on, even when you look at seat belts, it's like, the kids are the ones harping on the parents to put on. So it's kind of a good thing to have. And it'd be a pretty good thing, because there's some big name people that are putting it on and a lot of money behind it, coming in to give out all these, like I said, giving away free helmets and different things. So should be a good event.
Oh, fantastic, yeah. So it's great news. Keep us informed on, in August, how that's going.
Yeah.
Something some of us would like to, if you go see.
Yeah, it'd be pretty interesting. So then they have, they're going to do like Proctor, Hermantown, and a bunch of all those worked their way through Wisconsin, Michigan, and all over the place, but we might be having where Proctor, Hermantown, instead of everybody moving back up there to set up, is just have that bus their kids stop here and do it, so they can stay set up for two days here. That's all I've got, and if you have anything for me?
Thank you very much. 400 and some calls, that's a lot. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Please pass that on. City superintendent, department report, June 2023.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, administrator Owens. Some busy months here with the Fourth of July days going on, but we're following through. We're still getting a bunch of things done, trying to make things look better, try to improve every way we can. So we'll start in the water department. Month of June, we distributed 6.6 million gallons of drinking water in month of June. The Source Water Protection Grant, that we were actually touching on that later, so I'm going to hold off on that. Sewer Department collected 10.8 million gallons of wastewater month of June. We did have a June discharge, which is kind of normal for us. Just trying to drip a little bit more water out there, so we can do some more, some extra maintenance things with the lower depths of the ponds for that current state before this summer. Street Department, yeah, it's busy. You can see we're looking back up on almost every day, so it's going, we're almost completed. If there's areas we missed, please reach out to Public Works, City Hall, myself, whoever you can, we'll make sure to get that on the list. Cemeteries, parks, campground, things are just kind of happening down there, keeping up. As always, we definitely have our issues with some a little bit, less with others, but we're getting through them. So we have a lot to touch on here later on, different items on the agenda, but I think that's it for right now. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you. Municipal Liquor Store, department report for 2023.
Council Mayor, the liquor store. Just to give you guys a quick snapshot of all the Fourth of July festivities went down there, I don't have all the expenses yet, so I'm just looking at revenue versus revenue year over year here, so July 1st through the 4th. So last year we did $57,002.16. This year we did $60,066.12. So an increase of $3,063.96. For me, what makes that a little more impressive is if you look at days of the week for last year, there was an extra weekend day in the first through the fourth, so this year it was Saturday through Tuesday, versus Friday through Monday last year. So great job of the staff down at the Muni for pulling this off short notice. So also like to thank Public Works Department for their assistance with setting up the barricades, tables, chairs, and putting them back. Let's see, we are still running into some staffing issues, so we're trying to get that squared away. We're probably going to post here real soon for some part-time bartenders, so anyone listening out there in the Moose Lake world, go ahead and apply. Let's see, the air conditioning unit on site is not working currently. I know TJ from Regional Electric was down there today, just waiting to hear what he finds out. We also had the former vice president of the MMBA, Bob Leslie, stop down and meet with Murray down at the liquor store. I'm still getting some feedback on how that went, but that happened on June 28. And we're just, we're full speed ahead at the liquor store, so any questions?
Thank you very much. Go ahead, please.
Postings, we're posting through the city, correct?
Correct. We'll be posting through the city.
So does this sound like a major problem with air conditioning, since he is? Any indication?
Yeah, I, I don't know yet. I guess.
Yeah.
I just know it hasn't been working now for a little while, but I just phoned out today.
Very good.
It's not fun to be swinging brewskis, but it's 102 degrees in there.
No, very good. Thanks, Ryan.
Yep. And we're doing the technology part, closed session, is that correct?
Correct.
Anything on the library quarterly update? We have Laura, thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and city council members. All right, so the numbers of the library continue to climb. Last year, when we were counting the number of people coming into the library, June had an average of 56 people each day. The average number rose to 87 in this June. So that's an increase of 55% of the people coming into the library. We've been very busy. In the counting that I've done since 2021, we haven't had any days over 100 people in the library, but in the past month, we've had 10 days so far with more than 100 people coming into the library. So we have been getting busier. It's wonderful to see more people of the community coming in. Let's see, and in June, we did have our annual book sale, that was on the 16th and 17th. And this year, we had it at the arena, which I think helped it be a very big success. We had a lot of people come in. We also had vendors this year, which I think we will continue as long as we have the space for them, because that was a good way to draw more people, more interest into the book sale. So the donations from the book sale, we got over $4,600 this year.
Wow, congratulations.
Yep, that money will go back into the library for programs, materials for the community to use in the library. So I'd like to thank all the volunteers that helped make that a success. So they've all worked very hard to help support the library. And so with some of these funds, I will continue to add new material to the library, as well as reading outdated material, so that we can keep a moderate collection of books without crowding them too much, just make it easier for people to browse and find something new and fun to read. The library is also adding some other materials. We have puzzles that people can check out from the library, and in this next quarter, I'll be adding some games as well. The library has also recently added a STEM cart, or STEAM cart, so that's the Science, Technology, Engineering, Art, and Mathematics cart for teens to come in, and they can use the cart, so it'll be, it rolls, so they can move it to any other place inside the library. It'll be loaded with things like coloring supplies, crafting tools, science kits. It'll be for sparking innovation, creativity, critical thinking, all that sort of stuff, to have, help educate and have fun in the library for anyone who wants to come in and use it. So the summer reading program is also going well. We have 90 people signed up today, and we have lots of fun prizes, and people can continue to sign up throughout the summer until August 4th, when we close, and then the prizes will be drawn. There's a lot of fun things, gift cards, art supplies, blankets, stuffed animals, and so on and so forth. So it will be a lot of fun, and it's really good to keep kids reading all the summer, so they don't backslide on their reading abilities before going back to school. We do have some fun programs going on through the rest of the summer. We'll have some craft programs going on at 1:00 PM on each Tuesday. Next week is going to be origami, and then there will be a watercolor painting. And then we have some legacy programs from ALS, like Bubble Wonders. That's going to be a really fun bubble-making program. This guy is really good with like being creative, and it's going to be fascinating to see what he can do with bubbles. It's uplifting, a story about following your dreams. And then that is July 25th at 1:00 PM, or sorry, 27th. And then the 28th, we will have a free movie in the library. This month, it will be Post and Boots, The Last Wish, and that starts at 5:30. And that has been going pretty well in getting people, families to come in and watch a free movie at the library. We also have August 3rd, the second-to-last day of the summer reading program, we'll have Steve Hamilton, the magician, come and perform at the library. So we have a lot going on for the summer program, and we look forward to seeing a lot more people from the community coming. Any questions?
No, great job.
Thank you, Laura.
Congratulations on the book sale, too. Some graphs of attendance, so if you guys are interested in taking a peek at it. Moving on to four E, city engineer monthly report for July 10, 2023.
Yes, so this month, due to the holiday, this month's city engineering meeting occurred on July 10. That didn't give them much time, much time to turn around the minutes and get them back to me. So what I included in the packet this month was the meeting agenda. It's a little different format than the minutes, and I will include July and August minutes in August, August packet, just to keep everybody up to date. The agenda is a similar format. All really important items are going to be covered at different topics at different times throughout the course of the meeting. But if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out. Next month, we'll have two months of meeting minutes included.
And also, I think, you know, that is open to any of the council members to attend. If you want to get more involved with month-to-month activities, or ask Phil.
Yeah, that'll work, too. Yep.
All right, thank you. Moving on to four F, chamber commerce updates.
There was a monthly chamber meeting today at DOCS at noon. A couple of highlighted items from the meeting, there is a Brew Fest committee that is looking for volunteers. They're holding the Brew Fest this year on October 14 at DOCS, and so they're looking for community members to volunteer to be a community member. In addition, the Fourth of July recap, there were 61 parade entries, so that was the most that they had recorded. And so the parade was a very big success for the chamber. In addition, the flyover experience, there was three passes this year, and so everybody is giving really positive feedback on the flyover. In addition, we've had some really positive feedback on the fireworks show, so last year and this year, council had invested a little bit more in the fireworks display. Last year, unfortunately, there was fog that rolled in at the last minute, so this year was the first year where people could view the show in its entirety with the extra expenditure in there, and so we've heard some really great positive feedback on that. We have received a little bit of negative feedback regarding porta-potties, and we've already regrouped on that for next year. So overall, the fireworks on the Fourth of July was a success and went really well in the community. Everybody's kind of gearing up for egg-a-days through the chamber now, and so they're shifting gears and kind of prepping for the weekend.
The donations for fireworks, which was awesome, from the community.
Correct. So the city contributes $12,000 to the fireworks display, plus the cost of increased insurance. This year, the chamber has raised the most amount ever, and it's over $10,000. So almost, the donation to the city will almost cover the cost. Next year, she said she wants to make a goal to raise the full 12,000. So the chamber has been a wonderful community partner. Once I get a final tally on the, to the penny amount of donation from the chamber, I will share that as well.
Sounds awesome.
Absolutely awesome.
Any questions in the council? Hearing none, we'll move on to number five. Previously discussed business, city, A, city Moose Lake campground, Blue Docking discussion? Any new updates?
Yeah, I had a map put in here of a suggestion. I tried many different sizes, smaller than this, and actually, these sizes worked out the best, which is 30 by 60, but I have some points here, you know. Obviously, the main point of this is to increase city revenue and business revenue for the rest of this year and next year, because this would be a project that would be used for the rest of this year and next year, depending upon what we find out on the grant that we've applied for. One of the things that I like about this is that it's a limited cost for the city to build. There would be no engineering fees, and some of the costs would be basically using chalk to put down lines to mark out the sites. And then I'd like to see fire rings and picnic tables to be able to be put in, in this, in the area. And the other thing I like about this is that it can be rebuilt on in the future, if we find out that we do receive that funding for a campground, or it could also be rebuilt on in the future if it was decided that that area would be better used for housing or apartment developments in the, in the future. The map shows basically full-size sites. They're a little smaller than the ones down in the campground now. I went down and measured a lot of the sites in the campground, and they're about, most of them were around 30 feet to about 70 to 80 feet long. And this, this map shows how you can get 19 sites into the football field, and the engineering's design, they had eight sites in, in the campground area, which, to me, eight sites doesn't make it very viable for the amount of money that we would be spending in there. The way that they had it kind of designed, there was a lot more space in between the sites, and I could see that working if you had like a size of property of 10, 20 acres or something like that, or if you were building it for like a state park or something that has large area to use. With a 30 by 60-foot site size, you could fit in up to a 35-foot trailer and still have 25-foot for a truck to park in front of it. The things that I see that are good about bigger spaces, it would also allow more visiting vehicles to be able to be parked at the site, and then there wouldn't be any need for additional parking for visitors to come there. There would be room for picnic tables and a firing. It would provide more privacy and safety on the roadways, and it'd also be easier to back up into and to turn the corners to be able to maneuver your camper into your spot. I think that 19 sites would fulfill the need for dry camping, you know. I could see putting in more sites if I thought I could get more dry campers than that, but I think that 19, if you could get 19 dry campers to come in, that would be fantastic. I've looked in, I put this sheet in there just to give the board, the council, an idea of some of the new technologies that they're coming out with, with solar battery-powered camping packs, that you can charge out the solar panels off of a regular outlet, you can charge it off of your vehicle, too. And I was talking to a guy that has one of these, and he's designing a camper for dry camping, and he's going to use this system here. They make bigger ones, this is just one of many, they make more powerful ones, and he's going to actually use it to power his AC unit on his camper, which I was surprised that you would be able to get that amount of electricity out there, out of there for an AC unit. I don't know exactly how big that AC unit was, you know, obviously, there's different sizes of them. I think this could be a learning experience for if we do receive the grant money, you could have an idea of what works down there and what doesn't work down there. And I think if we did not get this grant money, there could be the possibility to transition this into an actual, real campground with water and electric by having the city put in the water lines. They're about a foot deep, so it's not a huge trench you'd have to dig, but that would obviously be up to Phil's crew. I did talk to him just briefly about this. And they also have the power company in town, and they could put in the, the pedals for the, for the power in that. And by doing that, we can save the city a lot of money by not having the engineering fees and things of that nature. I realize that there's a, there's a cutoff point of amount of money that you can spend before you have to have an engineer, whether it's $100,000 or not, or around or something. But you could also do this in stages. If you really, if you wanted to create it into a real campground, you could build up to that $100,000 amount one year, and then the next year, you could do the rest of it, so you wouldn't have to have those engineering fees. Now, obviously, you want engineers involved in a lot of projects, but I think something like this may be something that you could get around that with. And, you know, Bill Carlson pointed out to me that he had always wanted to see some pickleball courts down there and a horseshoe pit, but I think, I think there could possibly be another area in the city to put some of those things, if that's something that we wanted to do, like the pickleball court where the tennis court is now, and maybe like if we're serious about a horseshoe court, there may be other areas where the Little League field is, is down there that could be possibly looked into to maybe, you know, take care of some, some things like that, if that was decided by the city council, if. But I'm basically, you're just trying to put my points out. When I, when I drew it up, I drew it up for, I tried 40-foot sizes, 50, 55, and actually, the 60-foot size works out. fifty, fifty-five, and actually, the sixty-foot size works out the best. And if you wanted to take this, this plan and turn it into a large, larger site, it's easily, easily done because at the ends, there's actually another twelve point five feet that you would be able to use as an area for these. And right now, the roads in the middle are sixty feet. And I don't know if you need a road sixty feet. But the middle one, the middle sites, if you didn't need sixty feet, you could go to first, you could go to fifty and then extend the, the middle sites by ten feet. So you would have seventy. So if you did in the future want to use a plan like this, you could, if we didn't get the grant, you could easily transition this into larger sites or bigger, bigger trailers in the future. But, you know, like I said, I, this, this could be done the rest of this year and next year. This year, most of our busy time has, will be passed with the Fourth of July and Agad Days and that. But in order for this to catch on, to be people, to get aware of it, if we put it in this year, by next year, more people would be aware that we, we have this, this set up and this possibility for, for campers. And I just was, would like to just hear people's opinions on it and that. And if it is to be done, I would like to see it move forward on, on a pace where we could get this in by, by this year. When I drew this up, I didn't have all the actual figures. I used a picture from the, off of the flat book on the computer. Got some of my distances from that. But if you were to do it, we would have to find out this, where this bottom property line is. And then it would just be a matter of chalking this out. You'd have to be able to, you know, get your lines straight. I don't know if that's something that the city is capable of, of doing, or if that would be something that we would want to talk to a surveyor. A surveyor would obviously have to find the property line for us. And, and the camp sites are all actually on the football field. They take up the whole football field. So that is all flat and level ground, and it's, it's crowned. So the water will, will run both, both ways off of it. And it's just an idea. And I'm open to any suggestions or council, anything.
Quick question. Fifteen through nineteen, Walt, on, on your sites, is that where that fence, fence line is for the existing campground?
The existing campground fence line would be the line all the way to the right.
Are you talking about fifteen, eleven, seven, and one? Or what, are you?
Well, if you look at that north, north at the top, that fifteen through nineteen, beyond that would be that playground.
Yeah, the playground would be on the other side.
Of the steel fence.
Because the entry is coming off the road from.
Seventh, the road from Seventh Street. The outside line, except for the bottom line, is basically where the fence is now.
That, when you're saying outside line, which camp sites are you talking about?
Oh, it'd be.
The opposite side of the entry on the far side?
Yeah, that would be, the, the top there would be a fence line. And on the left and the right sides, the farthest lines would be, would be the fence. So I, I use the football field for, for it all to get the flat ground. But then when you use the area where the fence is, you gain another twelve and a half feet on each side, which actually, you could put a picnic table in those, in those areas. And, you know, I do have some questions, you know, like with, with this on turn radiuses. But when I compare these, this to like, say, the streets just right out here where the campers turn to go up Fourth Street, they can make that, that turn. And with this being actually the way it's drawn out now at sixty feet, I think that they would have no problem making that turn. And if there was questions about that, you could first go out and just put stakes where some of these corners are and just see if you can make a turn.
I guess, okay. To me, you, you have the fence line already at the campground. If, if you were going to try something, I would just try five or six sites along that, that fence line, because those are the closest, because you have to be within four hundred feet of the bathrooms. You could just see it, put it on the website and see if you could put six, seven sites in there and see if we have any interest. And then like your goal, I believe, Walt, was to see if there would be interest for next year and see where we could go with this. To me, that would be the simplest thing if, if we were to move forward, it's just a limited amount and see, get on the website and see if there's people that are interested in dry, dry, as in dry docking or dry camping or something.
The words are interchangeable.
It didn't sound like it's, you met the threshold of Blue Docking or whatever, but maybe I'm wrong. Anyhow.
The, the four hundred foot line, you would be able to put fifteen through nineteen, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and fourteen would fit in that. And I, I'm glad you brought that up because I was going to suggest that you could do, you know, like half of this to see if it would work first. You know, to see if there, how big of an interest there, there is. And then if it's working, you could do the other half.
Yeah, what I'm saying is you wouldn't, you wouldn't even necessarily need to do half of it. I would just, I would say you could start with that one row right next to the fence and do it and do something and see if anyone's interested. Because then if you're going to put all this effort into marking off half a campground or half the sites and we don't get five people to do it, I think that's kind of always the resources as well.
Yeah.
Wouldn't you be able to then take that part of the fencing valley so it could come through the campground? So would it be investing in putting in this entry exit?
I think it's just, I think it's just actually, I don't think anything could be fenced off, is it?
No, no.
There's still fencing there.
There is, there is some by the entryway there. But there is almost, there is pretty much a road already going to.
What is there?
And maybe some curbing that would have to be removed and some classified brought in to level that. Although, we did talk about that a little bit with Phil.
I, I did have some other figures here that I had figured out for campground profit that nineteen sites, say if you charge seventy or twenty-five dollars, that's four hundred and seventy-five dollars a night. And you try, most people come in for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So potentially, over a three-day weekend, you could generate one thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars. And then on the retail end, say if you could get those, those sites to spend a hundred dollars over Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, that would be one thousand nine hundred dollars. And then out of that one thousand nine hundred dollars, there would be a sales tax that the city would take in of a hundred and forty-six. And one of the things like you say about doing half of it, I realized that you might not have enough picnic tables to do this, extra spare picnic tables. But up, in the past, at Park Birmingham, I discussed about having a picnic table program of, for memorial or in memory of, like, we have the bench out front here. You could have a program like that. And if people wanted to purchase a picnic table or part of the cost of a picnic table, maybe you could get their plaque, you know. It's, it's not a new idea. I mean, you see this in other parks and stuff like that. But I, I do agree, you know, you could do part of it and, and see how it, how it goes. And then in the future, if we don't get this grant money for that, then we could possibly learn from that. And there's more and more of this, being able to generate power. They're coming out with new technology, basically monthly here for different types of solar panels and different types of batteries for charging and stuff like that. I kind of think that camping in the future, you're, you're going to see a lot more of that being available.
So Chris, you, did you have input?
Well, I was just going to make a comment that as a camper, camping person, I know that it's hard to get into many campgrounds without making reservations a year ahead of time. So I, I, I kind of would like to see us do a part of this and see how it works and, and go from there if it's a success, you know. Follow the baby more, you know, eventually adding more camp sites. It's, camping since COVID, I think, has really, really taken off and families are.
All right, to see that we may have more consensus.
Yeah, my only concern is this, is that our public works department, if they're already buried in a lot of things that they're working on, I do not want to pull them away from something that is critical to the city. And I, I agree with Walt's plan here on looking at this. I just want to make sure that they're not taxed.
I want to talk about a little bit of budget with this also because there would be some, some expense. And I think you're already at or over your budget?
Not over yet.
But no, the plan, all the planned things you have already.
Oh, yeah.
You have them budgeted, and there isn't any extra in there. There will be work with, I know with that entrance, that curbing probably will be, have to be pulled out and classified, put down. I don't know how far that is, but if you had to do, right, I suppose, almost to the entrance, what, looks like thirty yards, maybe?
Yeah, I think what we could do is we could, I could meet Walt on site sometimes next month and start drawing up some ideas and come up with some cost estimates to what it would take to actually get this rolling. So we have an idea. That would probably be the smartest step to take.
I think we're have to because we're in the middle of a, well, middle of the budget here. And we're going to be looking at the budget for September. So not to get too far ahead yet. We need to have a budget, have this in the budget, make sure that we're not running over in other areas, because I know we are. I know there's already problems that we are facing.
There is a little bit of legwork also from an administration standpoint with, you know, getting the sites entered, getting the measurements in. A lot, we have pictures of every site now currently on. And then just, you know, differentiating and making sure that we do a good job with presentation so that it's well-understood that this is a dry site. Because traditionally, our campers are used to having utilities, whether it just be water and electric or sewer water and electric. So we'd want to make sure that that was communicated very clearly as well. So a little bit of legwork, not impossible, you know, especially if we're looking at it on, on a scale to start. I just don't want the expectation to be that we can, you know, have this up and running just with, in a very short period of time. We'll just need a little bit of time to work on it.
So then, to me, this next step, I think we have consensus to move ahead, which I think it's a good idea also. And just being a dry site like that, it would not hurt any future development that may come forward, which I brought up last month. So to me, this, this is a very workable idea. Since we have, we do have consensus. I know Greg isn't here, the three of us, and you, I'm sure that makes four. So I think we should take the next step and do this planning and come back with a budget item in August. And if that's all approved by the council, moving ahead. It still would leave, I think it could be easily be ready by the end of, of August into September.
As far as Mr. Mayor, that camping, when people are registering on the campsite, could we put a survey on there? Would you be, could you use, because City Moveslake uses dry camping, would you benefit from this?
Sure.
If, if it's possible, I don't know if that's possible or not.
I can look into whether or not a survey is possible. We could also potentially do a survey on our website and/or Facebook as well.
Could ask the Chamber to do one also for us?
Yeah, so we, we can look into a survey. Does council want to weigh in as far as how many sites or a scale to start with? I mean, based on this, you know, you know, you could potentially do nine or ten or, you know, up to ten. Or, you know, what does that look like from a scale perspective in council's opinion?
I guess, me, myself, I'd like to see half of it done. Because that, I mean, and that would put us in the four hundred foot range.
It looks like nine of them.
If, if we had to, when you're out there putting the chalk lines down, you could do, do half of it instead of, you know, having to do it twice.
And I know that there's, at some point, we'd have to use more than chalk because they mow the, you'd mow it, and after the first mow, it probably mostly would be gone.
It's actually kind of sparse of grass in the middle of the field.
Right, it hasn't been watered and it's been dry.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's, I guess it's kind of like a test thing to see. And if we, if it works and it goes beyond, we could do something more permanent. So I don't have to worry about mowing.
If you did, if you did find that they are interested in dry camping, then in the future, when we did do our, our, our project, if it comes through, you could leave some sites that are specifically just for dry camping. And then you can save the city money on that construction as well.
All right. I think we have a plan. Thank you. So Phil, you will be, you guys. Moving on to five B ordinance, number one seventy, an ordinance for the keeping of livestock and harbor, harbor, excuse me, hobby farms. This is the second month. We usually do a three-month reading of this process. And we do have, I believe, two guests here. This would be the time for you to come up. We do have a, a time limit. That won't go over fifteen minutes over the whole discussion. So if you could make sure you can speak plainly and maybe leave time also for, well, if you can speak. Come on, please come up and give us your name and address.
Yeah. So my name is Jerry Corin. I live at eight twenty-four Foles in the house that's right next to the Historical Society, the yellow one there. I come here today to speak on ordinance one seventy, any disagreement with it? Honestly, I have a whole speech prepared, but it seems like I just need to throw it out and hide me against the facts. From what my understanding is with this ordinance, is you would need to have a quarter acre of land to have no more than four chickens, which if my math is correctly, equates to somewhere around a couple thousand square feet of space per chicken. Assuming you remove the buildings from the setup. Now, the problem with that is, is that that is in direct conflict with recommendations from the University of Minnesota State Bay Extension as well as the American Poultry Association, who both recommend anywhere from three to four square feet of indoor space per bird and around eight to ten square feet of space per bird, dependent upon size. Things like buffalo or pintons that are smaller would need less space. But things like Brahmas, for example, Jersey Giants, would need a little more space for little bigger girls. Now, I will fully state, I'm a hundred percent in agreement with the no rooster flocks of this. My wife and I, we don't have roosters. We refuse to own roosters. They're annoying, they're aggressive, and it's disrespectful to our neighbors to have them. And that's why we chose hens. That's why we chose breeds of chickens that are more docile, more calm, things that are going to just kind of hang out and live. I've had chickens in the city since two thousand and one. And I spoke with the city administrator at that time. And to be honest, I can't remember who it was. But I was informed that the City of Moveslake does not have an ordinance on chickens. And as long as my flock was not considered a nuisance, that I'd be fine. If they became a nuisance, they would address it with me. And if it continued to be an issue, that my flock would be removed. Totally agree with that. Since that time, I've had zero complaints about my flock since two thousand and one. I speak with my, not two thousand and one, sorry, two thousand and twenty-one, my mistake. So this is my third summer of chickens. I speak with my neighbors quite frequently on, on them to make sure that they are not a nuisance. And if they have any complaints, they can address it with me directly because I would much rather work together than work as enemies. I have extra eggs. I do donate them to my neighbors as well, including people next door. as well, including people next door, neighbors across the street, and if I have extras on top of that, some of my coworkers are interested in purchasing them as well, so, my point being is that with this new ordinance, this would decimate my ability to have my flock, I own point one seven acres, and it wouldn't allow it, it's completely impossible with the way it's written. Currently, my wife and I, before this ordinance was even discussed, uh, we invested this spring in the new setup, so we increased our coop size to go from, I believe, around twenty square feet to close to eighty square feet, so it doesn't sound like a lot, but in terms of chicken math, that's a lot, nearly quadruple our size, um, and we actually increased our run as well, so we wanted to give them more space, we wanted them to be able to not necessarily free range, because they can't go wherever they want, it'd be disrespectful to our neighbors to have our chickens in their, in their gardens, but also we didn't want them in a smaller space, so with that idea of ten square feet per bird and outdoor space, we've actually tripled that, I did the math today, rough estimates, thirty-five square feet per bird, um, not only that, my chickens eat my food scraps, they eat bugs, so they reduce mosquito and flea populations, ticks, flies, all of that, my food scraps no longer go into my garbage, which doesn't go into our landfills, and when they poop, it benefits me as well, so I take that poop, I cover it in line, because obviously I don't want flies to become an issue, so I work hard to make sure that we don't have a fly problem, once it's dried out, scoop it up, I place it in a composting bin, I let that sit for six months to a year, 'cause chicken poop is hot, you know, it is, it's a, it's a good fertilizer, but it gets hot, so this spring, all my chicken poop from last year went into my gardens, so in addition to the compost that I got from the city, with the chicken poop that I have from last year, I have a really successful garden this year, because I put the time and effort into my flock and keeping them safe and keeping them healthy, so my system is completely self-sustaining, it doesn't impact anyone around me, more often than not, I bet most of you have probably walked by my house and probably don't know that I have chickens, because I keep them in the back, I take them away from public sight, and I keep them safe, I'll be completely honest with you, when I'm home, do I let them out of their run? Absolutely, I do, I want them to come to other parts of my yard, I want them to eat the bugs there, but have they ever crossed the owner neighbor's yard?
Yeah, sure.
And I addressed that with them right then and there, and when the issue came up, all I did was I just put in a nice little plastic fence, problem solved, and my neighbors had no problem, they tear up my garden, yep, that's my problem, they tear up my flowerbeds, again, my problem, point being is that none of this impacts anyone around me in a negative way, okay? Not only that, in addition to keeping food out of landfills, keeping, you know, the bug population down, I provide my chickens with a safe and ethical home to live, okay? I don't have meat beds, I just have layers, that's it, and I have no judgments against factory farming, I understand that in a society that we live in, with the amount of people we do, these things we need, okay? Personally, I choose not to, not to engage in that part, but I like to know where my food comes from, so if I may show you, I brought eggs in for my chickens, these were all laid within the last three days, okay? I can tell you who laid each one of these eggs, I can tell you their name, I can tell you their personality, I can tell you what they drives me nuts about them, and I can tell you what I absolutely love about them, this egg right here, it's from my chicken Tina, she's my dog, my dog Brahma, not my dog Brahma, she's my light Brahma, Tina I've had for three years, Tina is literally my favorite chicken, and I would go to war for her, I'm not even joking, like, I am not joking, Tina's eggs have white little spots in them, that's how I know they're hers, she's my flock protector, and she's the coldest chicken I have, she's the first one out in the morning to make sure everything's safe, and the last one in at night, she's so fat right now, and can't figure out how to get into the old coop, because I blocked off the exit to keep her out, that I have to carry her in every night, I walk over, she runs to me, she knows me by sight, she lets me pick her up, and when I pick her up and tuck her up under my arm, her head nuzzles right here, every single night, I don't wanna get rid of Tina, Tina's done nothing wrong, she's done nothing but feed my wife, and my neighbors, and my coworkers, in one month, I'm expecting my first child, and since the day I found out my wife was pregnant, I haven't looked at forward to nothing more than teaching my child about our chickens, about their life cycle, to get him his own little gator, so he can unload the car for me, and take pride in driving it over to feed the chickens, this ordinance passes, he doesn't get that, he doesn't get to experience that, I didn't have that as a child, I grew up in the cities, I moved here because I love this city, I love what it's good for, we came down here to look at a house just on a limb, I drive to Duluth every single day, go to work, because I wanna live here. My child will not have that opportunity, that I didn't have as a kid, that I want to give to him, I wanna teach him about responsibility, hard work, I wanna teach him self-reliance, things that I feel like are valued in this community, and if he doesn't, if we don't have chickens, I can't teach him that, sure, you can make the argument, oh, we'll get a dog, yeah, I have a dog, that's great, dogs are great, I love my dog, dogs are not as hard work as chickens, dogs are not, I mean, I don't even know I'm going anymore at this point, sorry, so the point, the point being is, I look forward to the day when I can enroll him in my four H, and he can show the chickens that he's raised, the work that he's put in, and he can take pride in them, and I hope to have many more children after that, and that can do the same thing, I wanna be able to see them go down to Barnum, go to the county fair, and take pride in showing everybody his Tina, his Loretta, his Betty, I can tell you that these chickens haven't been nothing but a blessing for my wife and I, they've allowed me to connect with the kids that I work with as a therapist, and the families, they've allowed me to teach these kids many, many different things, they, I mean, every year I have a guy come in, and he does an egg drop, he requests these specifically, because then it creates a more fun atmosphere for the kids, now I understand that the city has to do what's best for its residents, I understand that there has to be rules in place, but as a person who's done nothing wrong, this feels like a punishment, and if there have been complaints about my flock, they have not been addressed with me, I'd be more than happy to address them with anybody that has a complaint and come to a resolution. When I talked to you, Mr. Mayor, by email in May, you assured me that there was no ordinance, and that everything had been addressed in a one-to-one manner, and all parties had come to a satisfactory conclusion, and I believe that, I really do, my concern is, is that two weeks later, there's a city council meeting with minutes that weren't posted, so I don't know what happened on the agenda, if this was a discussion that happened then...
It was decided that, uh, an ordinance should be with that.
That's fair, that's fair, what I don't want to happen, though, is I don't wanna be punished for other people's mistakes, the only time my flock has ever been mentioned in the public realm was a Facebook post that the city had rightfully shared to help somebody reunite them with their chicken, and somebody had accused that chicken of being part of my flock, that was incorrect, it was false, and the statement that we don't feed our chickens was also on record as well, very judgmental without fact, other than that, I mean, I don't know what else to say, you know, the, the ordinance itself seems to kinda go in the face of what's recommended by the next business.
Uh, what is the actual problem with the ordinance that is preventing you from having them, it's the...
The current ordinance states that we can only have four chickens on point two five acres or more, and I currently...
On what, what's the size?
Point two five acres, my property size is point one seven acres, which is point zero acres short of the minimum requirement for the city to allow me to have chickens, not only that, I have more chickens than four, I would also like to point out, now granted, this is old data, I won't deny that, but looking back at federal government recommendations for how to feed your family with a flock, what I was able to find was, you know, again, outdated, fair, but in the forties, when everyone's creating victory gardens to help reduce the strain on the United States system as we're, we're overseas, federal government recommended two chickens per person, per household, to help feed your family and help reduce that, now, you should, you're well aware, in the last year, the fluctuation of that crisis, and the shortages that have happened, both to the avian flu, and due to a couple factories burning, in that time...
I, I have to interject, at this point, out of respect, because there's another person that wants to...
Totally fair, totally fair.
We are taking note of what you said, and that, that becomes part of our discussion and, and final.
Yeah.
However changes, um, we need all this input, and it's appreciated.
Yeah, is this the second reading?
Yeah, I just had, how many do you have in your flock?
Currently, I have eight full-size chickens, I have added, uh, seven more, um, just this year, and I have four that are still growing, so that'd be a total of eighteen, this year alone, though, due to skunks, um, I've lost four, so that'll be for, we might have to replace them, so we didn't have twenty-two, which will have to show, um, totally been replacing them, as they've gotten since secured the run board to make sure that's no longer an issue, so.
We appreciate you coming, and, and, uh, thank you. Another person? No? Okay, I thought there was another.
So, the, um, I'd like to share, the city did receive communication, this person asked to not have their, um, name be shared as a matter of public record, um, so with that, I can only share their concerns, um, their concerns were in regards to, um, ducks and rabbits, um, and the ducks and the rabbits were being, um, kept and bred, um, in the backyard, and then, um, being utilized for meat, so the concerns from this resident were addressed by the ordinance, um, the keeping of ducks and rabbits, there was an issue with, um, feces and, and not taking care of the feces from the ducks and the rabbits, and it was contributing to a fly, a fly problem, and a smell, and things of that nature, so, um, this resident has been communicating with Mayor Sean and myself, um, those are some of the concerns that they had, this ordinance does address those concerns.
So, yes, Chris?
I'm trying to think back, many, 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 many years ago, we did have a discussion on chickens in town, because there was several, like, right over here, at that point, I thought there was a ordinance on chickens, but there wasn't an ordinance on chickens.
You know, I remember the discussion, in fact, we had a public hearing.
Yes.
Um, right here, about farm animals within the city, and, uh, we made some decisions, however, going through all the files and our books, cannot find that, and I don't know, I thought we had passed that ordinance with, with, uh, numbers in it.
There was, I know there was.
And, and I know we did, but there, that ordinance cannot be found, it is not in the book, it's not in our files, so I don't know if the, and it's not in the minutes that we look back at.
Taylor's done some extensive research, if, if you have an idea of a timeframe, she has, Taylor has done a ton of research, um, on this particular topic.
How far did you look back?
I would have to ask her.
Cause I believe, I, I can't remember, but I think Mike Peterson might have been on the board, or is it Mike Borghin?
Twenty, let's say, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen timeline.
It might have been even before.
Yeah, um, Mike, Mike was one of them that came here during the public hearing, because he has chickens, and he still does.
Yes, and that was...
So, do you, do you think two thousand and ten to, so...
Well, we're at the point, since we can't find it, we have the ordinance for dealing with, um, so we'll move ahead with it, um, so the message, I guess, reread it, um, if you don't have the electronic one, um, we should, they should have it.
Yep, I, yep.
Okay, if you read it, our next month's discussion will be some of these issues that have come up, like presented tonight, um, how we wanna deal with that, how we wanna look at that, and maybe differ, differentiate between the type of animals and how many, and, I mean, there's, there's data on all of them that, that I don't know about, which I'm gonna have to look at closer.
Is there a possibility of increasing the number, if you have, like, the proper...
Nothing has been passed, so it's all open.
If you have the proper way to keep them, you know, like, if you...
Yeah.
If you have a bigger chicken coop, or...
Even, even our discussion, let's say we were at an impasse next month, there's nothing that says we have to pass it next month, we just will continue on month by month, in fact, I think, Chris, when we worked on that years ago, I think we went almost to half a year, and even had a public hearing, because of the differences on the council, we could not come to an agreement, and, uh, went to a public hearing.
I know that, the reason that was brought up was, because it was right over on the corner, but I, I may have, roosters was the...
Right.
Big issue, and that's why...
The noise in the morning, and...
Was the rooster issue, so I, I, I know for a fact that we have it.
So right now, this is totally open for us to bring changes, yes, sir?
If I may add, I did look into some of the ordinance for some of the bigger cities that have a higher population density, and one thing that I noticed was, they did have ordinance, but there was rules about going above that, and certain things like talking with your neighbors, getting signed approval, that they didn't have an issue with, I don't know what that would apply here, um, but it could be something to consider, that, you know, obviously, you can't go out and a hundred chickens in your backyard, that's ridiculous, right, but, you know, uh, for example, Minneapolis is up to thirty with a rooster, full-dump roosters, would like to see that not be passed specifically, but, but again, that required neighbor, give her approval, some permitting stuff through the city, some approval, so making sure you had, had good space, and then you may do certain things, um, in different levels, you know, having level systems, level one is X chickens to X chickens, level two here to here, and there's just enough stuff to take along with it, so, just a thought to pass on the best as well, um, in consideration for this, it makes something easier for you to decide.
Yeah, makes sense, thank you, certainly we can look at it.
So, this is the second reading, when we feel comfortable with the draft that we're in, um, we will at that time then publish on the city website, the city Facebook, and it'll go in the newspaper, um, the reason why it hasn't been published yet is we're still fine-tuning, so publishing will occur prior to, um, the, what we expect to be the final reading, so we can just keep with the revisions, and then, um, publish when we feel, um, when council feels comfortable that we're nearing, um, adoption of the ordinance, so we will keep the information in the public, um, view, so to speak, for, for the review. In the interim, I can have Taylor, um, emailing out, um, information for consensus, and, and maybe some options for council to look at as far as, um, levels or steps, and we can just keep working on it, um, and have further discussion.
Are you open, if a council member wanted to come and, and see your setup?
Absolutely, I mean, with my initial email, I invited every one of you to come, Steve, um, Taylor, I invited Taylor, um, I'll be gone this weekend at a funeral, um, today is actually supposed to be my cleaning day, but unfortunately, the rain, I won't be able to get to, I don't really have a lot, but I'd be more than happy to have you guys come, I'll show you the additions, show you what I'm doing, to manage everything, the process, and I can introduce you to every single one of them.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, my only concern is this, is that if you, if we have two counselors here that have already discussed this topic, and believe that there is an ordinance, I, I don't want to move forward with ordinance one seventy with the idea that we're introducing something new, which we may not be introducing something new, we may be, people may have been, uh, operating in violation of an ordinance that we already have, and this, the process just hasn't been followed through on, for some reason, it could be a technicality, but I, I think that if Taylor does the work first, let's not bury something that's already, we can't find.
And then we don't have to rush into this.
No.
We can operate as we are right now, and, and go on a one-to-one basis, which we have done for years.
Yeah.
And if there's a problem, it is, it is, the issue is discussed and cleaned up, and come to an understanding with all parties, um, there may be more of a problem with the ducks and the rabbits that need to be addressed yet, has, has that been cleared up, do we know?
So, um, no.
With the neighbors?
Nope, it's, it's still an ongoing issue, um, and so...
I guess we should make that a priority then, because we were working under that assumption that we would, you know, do it on a one-to-one, clear it, come to an understanding, so we may have to take care of that.
Have someone reach out to former... Have someone reach out to former, uh, counselor Peterson as well.
Well, but I was just thinking is if we had a public meeting and he was there and he still has his chickens, there must have been, we had to have passed an ordinance of law.
Didn't I find it? I don't know if that.
I know John Unzen recalled it too.
Does he?
Yeah. We were talking about it at the fourth, so.
So then it'd be like John Unzen days.
Yeah, cause he said, he said this, kind of the same thing, that he says they know, they went through a pretty lengthy thing and a, and a public, public input thing, so.
So maybe it wasn't Mike on the board, maybe it was John on the board and Mike, I just remembered because he was showing up.
That can happen, it, it could have been passed so far back and not filed or put into a file and not transferred to the book. And then the file put into storage unit and who knows where, down the basement or in the storage room or whatever. But right now, it can't be found. And, and I think, I'm pretty sure it was Talbot. So we're going before twenty ten. And John Unzen was on during those years, um, all the way from the whole, probably part of the nineties all the way up through twenty ten, I know for sure. So it goes way back, this ordinance.
Is there a, just a file on public hearings that, that?
All that after so many years, you cleared, cleaned the files and you, otherwise they would, every file would be this one. Yeah. And, and back then, different staff filed it differently.
Maybe Jean would know.
And, uh, I talked to Jean and, you know, after years go by, you know, you know.
Well, I think it's a good idea, what Doug said.
Files are clean, I know that Tim cleaned out a lot of stuff, not just cleaned it out, I mean dumped it.
Yeah, but maybe, you know, you run into Mike to ask him what you recall, so.
I did and he doesn't remember.
Well, John does, it sounds like, so maybe John will be the next person to talk to, let's see if we can find this ordinance, if there is one, so we're not recreating things that we're.
And it doesn't mean an ordinance can't be changed or we, right, oh, we do another one. So to me, we're, we'll still operate as we have been until this is, till we come to some kind of satisfactory conclusion. So that means we probably have to address this issue with, uh, with the rabbits and, uh, what else were they?
Ducks.
Ducks. So then it goes back to is a, is a, the ordinance where, where it's an issue of.
A nuisance?
A nuisance.
Understood. We, we have gone through all of the books and, and records and E-files, um, that, that we have. So we'll, we'll rely on, um, personnel for some additional resources and then we'll do another combing through. And then we'll be in communication with council.
Moving on to new business, six A, the Minnesota Department of Revenue, City of Moose Lake, collection of local sales tax, sales and use tax agreement.
Yep, so this is an annual agreement between the Minnesota Department of Revenue and the City of Moose Lake for the collection of our, um, sales and use taxes. Essentially, the Minnesota Department of Revenue administers and collects, um, and enforces the Moose Lake taxes. And so this agreement is just addressing such. Um, the timetable within here is twenty twenty-three. They put this within our portal that it needs to be, um, executed and so looking for, um, a motion from council. So.
You have a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes.
Yes, sir?
When this first happened and we were approved to do this local sales tax, for some reason I, I thought there was something about a ten-year max on this. What, does anyone else have that recollection? Because I don't see any in here.
It was a ten-year.
Okay. So at some point, we're probably getting close to where maybe we should be talking to our legislation, making sure, because this is a file for the City of Moose Lake and the citizens, of being able to do some repairs, uh, lining of the sewers. Again, for those that don't know, we have thirty percent of our population of eight hundred percent of our sales tax.
So it was twenty nineteen, so you've got till twenty twenty-nine.
So I think it might be an opportunity for us to be putting, like, someone's ears and saying, hey, we, we need this thing extended. And we would like to have these discussions now, so it's not last minute.
Thank you.
We do have the motion and second and noted, which is stated.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose? Motion carried. Under six B, this is, uh, the seventy-three Trail Phase Two Project Update.
Uh, yes, so, um, we've got some exciting news in the past couple of weeks. Uh, the City of Moose Lake has been awarded a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant from the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources. This is for the phase two of the Trunk Highway Seventy-three Trail. So all in all, uh, we have now received two grants to complete the trail for a total of seven hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. So with our estimates from our city engineers, that money should fully fund the last phase of the trail. Uh, the proposed route at this time is from the roundabout and connecting to the existing portage trail. So with this funding, we'll be able to complete an entire loop around the city and trails. So really exciting. Administration is now working with the city engineers for, um, just kind of taking a look and establishing the, um, route easements, deep trail details, all of that. And then just starting to work with our two funding sources as far as, um, design and all of that great stuff. So we'll keep you posted, but that's really exciting news for the city.
Good job. Any other questions from the council?
What is the city's amount that we have to put into this, this one, a lot of last, wasn't it fifty thousand or something?
Um, at this time, the city does not have any contributions requirements, so it can be fully funded with the seven hundred and forty-two thousand.
Thank you.
You're welcome. This will not cost the taxpayers any.
Moving on to six C, Fourth Street Reconstruction Project, Jet and Company Incorporated Pay Application Number Seven.
Uh, yes, so we're getting down there, we're almost to the very end. Uh, this is pay application number seven. Retainage has been reduced down to one percent, so we should have one more pay application, um, before wrapping up the Fourth Street project. The amount due for this application is forty-six thousand, uh, sixty-seven dollars and thirty-nine cents. Looking for council approval.
You have a motion?
Don't move.
Do you have a second?
One second.
Any questions?
I just want to ask our, uh, Phil about that, if everything was where we needed to be and that they've taken care of everything, which I have to leave it, we have, but I just want to make sure that we checked all the boxes.
Yep, yeah.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Under six D, the twenty-twenty-three sewer lining project discussion, under A, sanitary sewer jetting and televising quote.
Uh, yes, so at a, uh, last month's council meeting, um, Superintendent Etner had discussed changing locations for the twenty-twenty-three sewer lining project. So what we've included in a packet is a map of where a, um, proposed project could be. With that, our city engineers do need, um, televising of the existing infrastructure for, uh, the bid process. And so I will let Superintendent Etner kind of fill you in on what we've worked with done in the past month.
Yeah, so we have conducted this stage, I'm sorry, this station, net home inspections, a whole bunch of major inspections of, of that area. It's definitely in, in the lining and, um, the next portion of this will be to approve one of these two poles for, uh, for the cleaning lining.
What's nice about this proposed project, it'll kind of take over and essentially the lining for that entire area. Will be completed with one project. So I know we discussed that in prior meetings, but I just want to clarify, um, that this would take care of that whole section of city.
That's correct. Uh, you'll have one es- one estimate on page one of three and the other one is that handout, I handout earlier. Yes, we need one of these approved. I am not always in favor of taking a low price when I know what I'm getting for a product at the end of this. I will, I will be very honest about that. But it's very hard to find televising cleaning companies to come to work right now because everyone's already scheduled on them on, on some of the projects.
Phil, can you provide your recommendation as far as?
Yeah, my, my recommendation, um, even though it is a little bit out of the norm for us, I would recommend Nelson's foundation. They are a little more expensive, they have done previous lining and they do all of our cleaning for us, other of the stations. I understand it's a little bit more money, I do feel a lot more, uh, comfortable with, with the videos and televising I have seen from them. To be honest with you, uh, the difference of five hundred bucks if we have to have another line. If you have an issue, someone can't see something, if we have to have to come back out, is that even worth the money at this point? Will they come back and do it free? Yes, absolutely. Or will they drag your feet for a month and put the project further behind? Yep, is that worth five hundred bucks? It's not to me, but it's your end of the month. So that would be a decision for you, but my recommendation will be for Nelson.
Council discussion, under motion?
I guess my discussion, I, kind of going against doing a motion second, but you've looked at this area and discussed it last month, that this is a problem area anyhow.
Correct.
So this is what we need to do and this is the area we should do first off.
Correct.
And I would agree with Superintendent Etner that using something that you used in the past, it's not a new amount of money. I would suggest that we go with that.
In addition, this is a little bit time sensitive, so this activity does need to happen before, um, the project can go up for bid. And so the city engineers at this point in time are, are, um, waiting on the city.
Correct.
Which is not normally the case. So if we get this, um, um, activity completed, we can then turn around and get a bid, um, offer bid for the project to make sure that the lining project happens within this calendar year still.
Thanks for that call, by the way.
Just saying.
Maybe just stay true to the community where this is gonna be.
This will be down on the seventh, eighth, Seventh Street, Eighth Street and Nash, yeah, by the way. Yep.
Very good. Want to make sure they understood that, one hundred percent.
I will second, uh, the motion for, uh, Nelson's.
So you did make the motion?
Yes, with Nelson. I was leaning that way, I know it sounded like I made a motion.
I sounded like that.
I would say, yes, let's just do that.
Okay, well then I still will second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to six E, waste water treatment facility sludge discussion.
You're not gonna start this one off? As soon as you're on tell? Okay, so we're, we've been talking about capacity, right? And I'm not gonna sit up here and just yap for a half an hour about capacity. But one area where we can and also start looking at gaining more capacity is our sludge volume that we have in our ponds. That, believe it or not, does take up a, a very large amount of volume of space and capacity in our ponds. Total rough numbers, we had pond one, two, and three. Sonar, radar, lighthouse, whatever it's called, I don't know. We got a screaming deal on it, it was a really good deal, it was really cool and we learned a whole lot of stuff, so we went for it. Regardless, um, turns out we have, we have a lot of sludge. Officer Juden, you remember, as you said, you remember Ted you were on, uh, when we did this, uh, twenty-seventeen project?
Yep.
Have you did some sludge work out there? So there's a note there in my, in my chicken scratch, uh, in twenty-seventeen, sixty-five thousand dollars we spent, right? We did not spend on sludge removal. We slud- spent that on sludge move, movement of the sludge going on. So sixty-five thousand dollars we spent to move sludge to different corners of our pond. So over that, and that's fine, that's a temporary mandate. What they have now is they have a bug program. And those bugs and organisms go in there and they, they eat all that sludge, not down to nothing, but what it does is it maintains the level of your pond. If you're, if you're in that two to six inch window of sludge, you're in a really good place. If you look at some of these sheets, and I know we're not gonna get into it right now, but if you have questions, I can, I can go over some of this with you. We are starting to have some serious issues with sludge out there. The biggest thing for us as, as a community, we're working on capacity. That takes up a lot of capacity, right? So I mean, that's equivalent to, let's say, well, pond, uh, pond three, I have that right up in front of me, that's equivalent to two point five million gallons of wastewater. Just in the sludge volume in that pond. You figure two hundred gallons of wastewater per day at three hundred and sixty-five, six, three hundred and sixty-five days a year is not good? A lot, you know? Lot, lot, lot of additional water, you have that sludge there, you could immediately create more capacity. Not saying we're gonna jump leaps and bounds, but we're working on lining, so that's one avenue, here's another avenue we can do this with. There is a proposal in here, I'm not proposing anything tonight, this is just trying to plant some seeds. I'm thinking we will, we should talk about this for budgeting twenty twenty-four. It's eighteen, twenty thousand bucks a year, but I mean, it's another way to fight that capacity.
Superintendent Etner, does that cover all of the ponds?
That would cover these three main primary ponds.
Understood.
That's, that's what I was gonna ask, if we'd recommend to do, let's say we put it into our budget for next year, um, how many ponds would we do?
Yep.
And then would we do a program to get the rest of the ponds? Which would make sense, if we're gonna start down that road, then we should do so many per year. And that would have to fit in with this lining project money. It, it's gonna get budget buys, it could get a little touchy, but we could work it out.
Right, right. It's, it's our next, it's our next one to look at as far as gaining more capacity. For example, on that same page, page for pond three, the removal of that sludge, right now it costs us a hundred eighty thousand dollars.
Just for one?
No, that's just to literally scoop all the sludge up in the pond and get rid of it. So, and I, I look at that as a lining, lining project and a half, lining project integrated.
That's what I could see could happen. But what does that do for life of the pond? It must shoot it way out. I mean, last time it was done, I don't remember in nineteen years we ever did it.
So the first, the old eight ponds do not get overloaded as heavy as the three new ones do.
Right.
That's what hurts the pond. The, the remainder of the ponds, the last sludge judging, um, results that I have are there between that two to six inches. And that's been from the fifties.
So.
So they are made.
Can go a long time.
Yeah, if your chemistry is right, the pond will take care of itself. If it's overloaded, you'll have an issue. We're having overload issues the way our ponds were built and added on to. We don't have any other options.
No, an option, no, funding to me on this, which I want to state now so it doesn't get lost. All our main partners in this have a percentage of flow into those ponds.
That is correct.
So the state, the district and the city, that, to me, that cost, let's say it is a hundred thousand. If, if, uh, the state is forty percent of the flow, they should be paying forty percent of that work. The district, if they're eighteen percent, they should be, they should be charged that eighteen percent, the rest will be the city. Those numbers are just as an example, that's not probably what they are. But just to get the explanation, when a joint project or a project like that for all the parties that we have are using that, then that needs to be distributed amongst them all. So it doesn't just hit our budget. It'll have to be coordinated with them and, hey, this is what we're gonna do.
Sure.
This is what's gonna happen. And, uh, make sure that it is, it is whatever we do, and I think we need to go forward with this, is make sure that we discuss it to them before the individual bus, budget cycles.
Sure.
The state is before July first. And, uh, I suppose ourselves and, and the district, I'm guessing, are January.
Sure. So yeah, we're not gonna dig any deeper in this unless you guys want to use a board, read it, it's super good information, I'm sure you guys all find it super informative.
I think this is something that we should look at too, um, on a bigger scale. Looking at the state grants, state money, and maybe even looking at, at something with bonding because otherwise we're gonna be jacking at the sewer bills so high. It becomes a problem. So several different ways. And this is for you guys' benefit. Now.
Now, I will say this, Moose Lake has some of the cheapest sewer bills around in rates around.
Correct.
And I know you guys all know my opinion on sewer rates and water rates. I know that. We're not going to go down that path, but.
Right.
Just keep that in mind.
Good discussion. I think we should go ahead. Well, I'm going to ask for consensus to look at this more.
I guess if I could say, I would think that we should have that discussion with the parties involved that are large users. Since we're already past the billing cycle for this year, or for 2024 for them. And with that, we should also be doing our due diligence and looking at, do other cities have large user surcharges for these things? If there's not going to be a buy-in from these large users, we may have to look at implementing some type of fee schedule for them because it is largely due to NSOP, MCF, the hospital, and the school district using this. So we should be prepared and do our own due diligence as well. And let them know that we are looking at that and we like their buy-in and partner with them.
Yep. Very good. Thank you. You must have the next one.
I have a last couple of them here.
All right. 6F Lift Station Lining Quotes.
So there are two quotes in the packet for lift station lining. These are affiliated with the Source Water Protection Grant that Superintendent Etnor has applied for and received. So if you want to give a little bit more information, Phil, on where my counsel of the grant money received and what the city's portion will be.
Sure. A $10,000 implementation grant, we have $4,500 supplemental grant, and then we budget 4,500, correct? So it turns out we're coming in with the lowest estimate we came in 11,000 bucks started.
Correct.
Oh, sorry. We're 1100 dollars short. So regardless, for re-able visitation to give it some more longevity, so it can take care of what we need to take care of. I think we've done a pretty good job all the way around. Everlast Rehealt, that's the same outfit we used for the lift station and campground last year. We haven't had a lick of trouble with that since we haven't done it. So I would be very happy recommending that we use Everlast.
Which lift station is this?
This one's a 7th Street Lift Station.
Okay. So this is totally the city's responsibility?
100%.
Okay.
Correct. And so $14,500 of grant money. There was a budget for 4,500. So we're just off 1100 bucks, but this was a planned event and Superintendent Etnor did a great job of acquiring grants to help.
So what are we looking for today? Are you looking for a motion?
We're looking for a motion, yep.
To move ahead and there'd be an extra, you said?
1100 dollars.
1100 dollars.
And we discuss finding that within the repairs line item, maintenance and repairs line item of that particular budget.
Correct.
Pond budget.
Counsel? The two quotes, one's from Everlast Rehab and the other one's from?
It should be, I'm very. Or Hyperline, sorry.
Hyperline. It looks like there's quite a bit of difference in these quotes.
There is.
I was wondering, is that the same?
They're close to the same product as you can get. They don't make, apples to apples. It doesn't work that way in mining.
It's still a 50-year product from Everlast. I'll make a motion. I would go with Everlast for 20,100 dollars.
Do you have a second? I'll second that. Any questions, comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. Thank you. On to G Moose Lake Gravel Pit Discussion.
Yes, so this conversation has gone through council and the cemetery board. And so at this point in time, where we're at is we have established the information we needed with the city engineers in order to start to look into the permitting process to operate a gravel pit. The next step was looking at the land itself and opportunities to log the land in order to eat away at the cost of facilitation and permitting. And so Superintendent Etnor acquired two quotes. In addition, in your packet, you also have a map of the particular area in question. And so, Phil, can you provide a little bit more information on the two quotes that you received?
Yeah, so timber quotes are not easy. They're maybe a little difficult, but in this situation, they come to us as what they're going to pay us. The amount of money we're going to make per cord of product that we're going to harvest out of that land. So we have two here, one from Palmer Logging, we have one from Aguris Logging as well. Looks like Palmer Logging be paying a little bit better on the molds for some of them. Yeah, moving forward, I mean, this is the next step if we're serious about doing this. Anyone has any hesitations before we log it, now's the time to bump the brakes if you're going to.
Phil?
Yeah.
Could you say, explain to like the public how this benefits the city by having our own gravel pit? How this will cut costs for future projects?
Yep. So just some rough numbers. I ran 30% of the 4th Street Road project was gravel spending.
That was 1.3 million, 1.2 something?
Correct. So 300,000.
300,000 dollars.
Just off the cuff, right? And we use $15,000 worth of material, whether it's wash sand, gravel, rock, whatever, throughout the course of the year. We're not going to be a full-fledged wash plant out there because we're not going to put water in, we're not going to go to the Department of Health, we're not going to wash any material. We're still be purchasing some material from our local vendors. But the majority of it, the classified, some of the sand, some of that stuff, we'll be able to use in-house for our use. What this is going to make instead of saving you guys money is I know it's a can of hell. Because then all the rubble and the overburden that gets hauled out goes back to our bit that we have crushed later and put back into our own infrastructure instead of letting it go to some other pit for nothing.
Just to provide a little bit of perspective, so our sales tax generates about $250,000 a year, which is saved for projects. So you know, having this up and running, you're looking at cutting off a whole year within the cycle between road projects.
Go for it. Whoever was first.
You're looking?
Go ahead.
I was wondering, who would do like the screening, the digging, and that would be contract that out to somebody else or does the city do the digging?
We would contract that out.
Okay.
Yep.
I just want to make sure that we are respectful.
Yep.
To the cemetery and to families that have loved ones there and funerals going on and that there is enough of a buffer zone that as I'm visiting my mother, I'm not looking at somebody milling and digging and.
Yep.
Because the cemetery is.
It's a sacred place.
It's a sacred place and it's, and I just want to be absolute sure that we're not disturbing that.
I agree with you more. I would like a recommendation from someone other than me to help David Appoff strictly put up to see.
Could that be something that you could discuss at the cemetery meeting? Because you know, obviously they have concerns about that as well, you know?
We brought this up to the cemetery board already and they were fine with it, but they wouldn't give us a concrete answer on strip width either.
That's going to have to come from city staff.
Thick enough so you can't see through it, you know?
Right.
I also, I wonder, is there a way to figure out like to say how much gravel is out there, you know? We have the drive-in out there which has been turned into a gravel pit. And I know that Dressels were able to dig down 65 feet before they hit the water line. But I think there was a steeper hill at the drive-in than there was at the cemetery. So I'm just curious, you know, if there's a way to tell how far we can dig down, you know, to be able to determine how much gravel possibly is out there.
Sure. Yeah, there is. I mean, we can have Bron come out and put in some test wells, but that's.
I think we're getting too far ahead of ourselves with that. I understand your concern, however, that pit was used for all of Carlton County and outside of Carlton County. People were pulling out of there. This is for the city of Moose Lake. We're talking about something that's going to last a very, very long time. So yeah, it may be important, but I don't think that we have to be building test wells and things of that nature. It's good discussion. I don't think we need to move that far.
I think step by step would be the way to go with this. Once we clear the land and get an idea of elevation and you're looking at it, you know that we're going to be looking for it to level. And we're going to know when we need to do testing. In fact, probably visually, we will know before.
Correct.
Way before that, because I don't want us to get to the point where you drive down into the cemetery. You want to just drive level into it. There's going to be a point where we're going to say that's enough. We're not going, we don't want any more taken out of it. Because it was bought for cemetery use.
I'll dig in an area.
The benefit is that we can use the gravel to get to that level.
I'll dig in an area with this.
I have a different map, I think, in last month's council meeting with the.
I can show you Chris.
What? I just don't know how you.
Take a look, take a look like, well, he saw the areas that are. Yeah, play poems right here. The building is here. This is open all the way. We have that all.
The polary.
So this area is from the highway all the way to that road that comes in by the, between used cemetery and this whole open area.
I just wonder how, so all this would be?
Just that spot.
And if that goes well, if that goes well, these two areas also can gravel. I mean, this is going to take forever to be checked out.
Yeah, we should just, we really should be deciding the buffer zone and decide what's going to be, because that's a sacred area.
Right.
And her mom's buried there.
In this break-in here, so I just, I mean.
You know, the best way to do is to take a visit and come right here to this corner, Phil.
I think that's what we should be doing.
I do too.
Yep.
Yep. The fact we've gotten to this point, absolutely. Before we, because once we do, it's too late and I don't want to.
I think we can, we can go ahead with the motion on the bid, but with the plan to come out, make a visit and set that off.
Individually, because otherwise you have to have a special person, maybe, so.
In addition, just a reminder too, the entrance will be off of Kloski.
Yeah. And my only other question was, did both of these waters, I saw that Palmer was putting it down to four inches of cutoff down there. I thought there was something about their, about inches of how low they're going with their.
I think they were both going to go with six inch, six inch and up for the vaults, six inches and down for the vault.
Okay.
Yep, which Paul pays quite a less than those.
Okay.
Yep.
I just wanted to make sure that we're supposed to.
Apples to apples?
Sure.
Yeah, which we're right in there.
And you, do you have a recommendation, Phil?
Yeah, I guess I'll be extremely honest. I mean, Palmer seems to be like they're going to pay you a little bit more and your contractor is taxpayer's help, so.
Very good.
I did put, we were going to put a March 1st deadline on because they will be, this will affect them during. So, but I mean, there's not much, there's not much to it. So it's not like it's going to be a month-long sale, you know? But there's nothing out there to do.
Counsel?
What do you want, consensus?
If they're all big with a buffer, they'll raise it. Yeah, 100%.
Well, I think we.
That would be part of the motion.
I think you do, would you a motion to accept the contract? With the exception that the council sets the boundary out there. How far into the section, I think you have to meet with Phil and determine that.
It'd be not easier to go out there and look at the site, you know? And I would say a bigger buffer with a little extra space would be better than would give you a little room in case it wasn't enough. I mean, I would make it on the larger side than on the smaller side.
It'll be up to you, it'll be up to the council, whatever you guys decide.
So I can have two counselors at a time, correct?
Yes.
So I have to have three meetings? Which is totally fine. I'm just making sure.
Right.
Okay.
Whoever wants to, there may be some that don't want to. And you contact Greg when he's, it'll be up to Greg.
Would there be a buffer line along Kloski Road as well?
There currently is a small one up until the driveway entrance to that hay field. And we would leave that, yes. And we would leave the buffer just like that around the rest of Kloski Road.
I'll make a motion for Palmer. With the understanding that counselors will go out there and meet with Superintendent Etnor and a respectful boundary will be, of trees will be left on the property.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. The next section, we're going into closed session, but we'll finish up with the reports, the committee and announcements if we would do that. The ones that are in the closed areas is H, the roof hail claims bid contract discussion. I is the City of Moose Lake certification or deposit interest rate negotiation discussion. I is the Clifton Larson Alman LLP contract discussion. K is the.
Land purchase.
That was the land purchase again, the discussion, and that is with the school, correct?
No.
No, that is with the owners of the land behind Kritcher. And also the camera server replacement quotes. Because of security reasons, things that we are going to, we have to state we don't want out in the public, which may compromise security. So with that, we'll move on to reports and correspondence. 7A Bill Carlson taking care of our own first communication to city council. Bill wanted that in the city records. I know there's been communication with Bill. Do you have anything to report?
Sure. So I, myself and Ryan have both been in communication with Bill. In some of his communications, he does reference some city activities that I have clarified with him as far as prioritization and things of that nature. So we had a great discussion with Bill. We absolutely appreciate his insight and expertise on this topic. Ryan has committed to meeting with him and just, you know, kind of continuing to have open dialogue. So there has been discussions since this communication was received, both of these actually. And in addition, the next reports and correspondence is just a reflection of our due diligence. So the city has been in contact with the state and looking for grant monies. And that communication does confer that we are not eligible for infrastructure broadband monies from the state because we do have a private provider in the area that meets the threshold of the millibites per second required by the state, so.
Moving on to 7B Diane Wells, Minnesota Deployment and Economic Development, Office of Broadband Development Communications. And that was in the cabinet you just stated.
Correct.
About meeting common area. Moving on to 7C, the LCCMR Grant Proposal Determination 2024-300, City of Moose Lake Campground Expansion Project.
Yep, so this is a communication from LCCMR. The city is not receiving funding within 2024 for campground expansion. The city engineers are working with their lobbyists at a state level to see if there should be any modifications to the grant proposal entry based on committee feedback. So we're kind of working in the background to see, hey, was there something about this particular project that you liked? Didn't like? Any recommendations for removal from the project in order for? that you liked, didn't like, any recommendations for removal from the project in order for approval of funding? So we're doing that work in the background. The campground expansion has not been funded for twenty twenty-four.
Well, good progress. Moving on to eight, committee and board meeting minutes. Eight A, the Moose Lake area fire protection district meeting minutes for June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Any specifics? Or whatever else?
No.
Any questions by the council?
No.
Moving on to number nine, announcements. Regular Moose Lake City Council meeting Wednesday, August ninth, twenty twenty-three, four P M, right here. Moose Lake Economic Development Authority, Wednesday, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, twelve P M, at the city conference room. Moose Lake Water and Light Commission, regular meeting Tuesday, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, at one P M, at the Water and Light Office. Moose Lake Housing and Redevelopment Authority Board, Monday, August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, eleven A M, at the Hillside Manor Office. Moose Lake Area Fire District, Tuesday, August eighth, twenty twenty-three, six thirty P M, at the Emergency Response Center. And the Moose Lake Park Board meeting, Monday, August seventh, twenty twenty-three, five P M, city council town board chamber, right here. We will now, I'll ask for a motion to go into the closed meeting. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carried. So we will go into closed session, then come out of it and close the regular board meeting.